Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Jared?
Yes.
And Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Okay. It's all yours, Mr. Slaven.
Thank you. Just as information again for the public who is watching, the only reason that we're doing it this way is strictly because three of the selectmen are virtually brand new and because we're dealing with town meeting warrants, et cetera. They reverse obviously trust myself only because of prior experience over the last 11 years. It has nothing to do with the Mrs. Wurts's capabilities and not strictly a matter of experience only. I'd like to move ahead from there. So the next up is announcements. Ron, do you have anything?
Nothing this week.
Jared?
Nothing this week.
Tricia?
Myself, nothing.
And I'll make it all four. I'll let this go for today. Next week, board comments. Again, Ron?
No comments.
Jared?
No comments.
Tricia?
Likewise, it's a pretty easy night. No comments.
My only comment is gonna be, we need to be a little more vigilant as far as COVID. There is on the western part of the state, there's been an uptick. And even in Wareham itself, the areas and stuff, we've noticed a little bit. Unfortunately, we're, it looks like we're going back into some degree of COVID. So again, I ask everybody to please be careful and cautious. Okay, we have no appointments, reappointments or interviews. Next up will be item number seven. And that's Tricia, if you want to read that one off.
Okay, the item seven A is application for the Wareham Fire Department, 315 Main Street, Wareham, for use of town roads for the fire prevention, open house and parade to take place October 16th, 2022, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The parade will start at Bessie Park and end at the fire station.
Do we have anyone here from the fire department? I don't believe so, looking at the list. The only issue before we go ahead and vote is that the fire department, the police department will have to work together because unfortunately, fortunately, depending how you look at it, with the new Toby Hospital setup, the ambulance will come down Main Street from either direction at any time at all. We have no control over that, so they'll have to watch out for that coming to the hospital. And with that, I'll take a motion to approve everything as listed in the forms are in place. I'll correct everything that's signed off properly.
Make a motion that we accept the the application for the Wareham Fire Department for their ta- the use of town roads for the fire prevention, open house and parade to take place October 16th from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Ron?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Alan, yes. 400, thank you. Next up, we have on town business, we have the CMWRRD, which is basically transfer station agreement. I don't think Jeff Osich is with us either, from what I could see. I'm going to ask each one, has everybody read through the agreement, starting off with Ron?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Does anyone have any questions? Just raise your hand if you do recognize you know.
Mr. Osich is trying to call me real quick, so.
Well, my question would basically be if you have any questions, since it involves, you know, your administration as well on this.
No, what I would say is, Mr. Do you want me to try and get Mr. Osich, he was calling me right now?
I don't think it's necessary unless you have something in the agreement that doesn't match what you need, because I've gone through and everything seems correct.
No, yeah, this started back under with, I know that those when the former selectman Denise was on the was on it, putting it together, and this has been known there, the Carver, the community of Carver has already voted this at their town meeting, so that's why we're voting the same version as what they voted.
Yeah, I think the only thing I noticed is that we're supposed to get notification, certain things during the year, et cetera. And again, because I think the change in selectmen and stuff, there's been a little bit of a miss on that, they may come to your office, but the board of selectmen hasn't seen certain, you know, reports we're supposed to see, so just as a a comment only. Actually, I see he's attending. Yeah, I'm seeing a note that Jeff is in the attendee list. If he's available, can you bring him in? Okay. All right, could you unmute yourself and explain anything as far as this issue?
Hello, can you hear me?
Can hear you, thank you.
Okay, I can see all four selectmen and also Derek on my screen. I apologize if you can't see me.
Are you just hiding that so?
Okay. As, as the executive director for the district, I just want to say that our chairman Bob Elbin from Carver would have been in attendance, but he has to work at the hospital in Plymouth, so he's not here. The only thing I really have to add is you have the language of the new agreement that the district committee adopted, and also it was passed at the Carver Town Meeting back in April. The intent of this document and the article that you'll be discussing at your meeting in a couple of weeks was to replace the February 1973 agreement between towns of Carver, Marion and Wareham. As you're probably aware, that when the agreement with CMAS to take the district's trash and trash of the towns ceased to exist as of the end of 2020, the town of Marion decided to withdraw from the district. The towns of Carver and Wareham have met over the last year and a half or so, prior to the Carver Town Meeting, and came up with some changes to the agreement that was originally started in 1973. As you're well aware, the Carver landfill has been closed and capped by CMAS, and no more trash is going there in the district. Did dispose of the Benson Brook Transfer Station to the town of Marion, who's operating that as they own the underlying land. And the currently is a four-year lease agreement with the town of Wareham to operate the 28 transfer station, which benefits both Wareham and Carver residents. Just in general, the, probably the, the two major items that somewhat different unless you have specific questions, number one, that in the current agreement, excuse me, in the new agreement that's being proposed, any borrowing, which I don't envision the district needing to do, but if there was borrowing, it would have to be voted on by individual town meetings, both in Carver and Wareham, that this is adopted. And changes to the agreement would can be made by the Carver and Wareham selectmen by a vote of each town, that that you can find in section, Roman numeral five, section B. In general, as it sits right now, there is no more employees. I'm just part-time and probably will be non-existent in another year or so. But the reality is, it's an opportunity for Wareham to join with Carver, looking toward the future. And the sole reason that the district still exists is because of the environmental issues primarily with the Carver landfill. And the district is responsible for obtaining and maintaining a $10 million environmental policy, which has been in place. It is due to be renewed for another 10 years in 25, and then the following 10 years at 35, taking you up to 45. So basically, that's the quick rundown. I will say that I know Judy Whiteside is not with us, but she is a board member of the district. And she indicated that one item that that I was to discuss with the board of selectmen was the fact that Wareham does have some equipment that was transferred to them. There was a value of approximately $24,500 for that equipment. It's a credit right now to the town of Wareham, which would mean that if at some point in time in the future, money needed to be obtained, for whatever reason, that that is a liability against the town of Wareham. I believe she was going to or wanted to sponsor an article to pay it off now, but that's up to the board of selectmen in Wareham. If you wish to do it, the district board is not concerned one way or the other at the present time, if Wareham decided to pay or not pay. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ron, do you have any questions of Jeff?
No, I think I understand everything as it's written.
Thank you. Jared?
None at this time.
Thank you, Jared. Tricia?
No, I don't. And Jeff, thanks for attending because your explanation helped me even more, so I appreciate your time.
And I'll also make myself available at your town meeting, so it takes place, I believe, on the 24th, so if you have additional questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Great, thank you.
I have no questions. Thanks, Jeff. We probably will. Jeff will have some possible questions at town meeting. We appreciate your being able to attend as well. Mrs. Whiteside will probably put on the agenda the other piece, as far as that piece of equipment at 24,500 at a later date. Mr. Sullivan, you have any questions?
Yeah, I think there was some confusion on that last equipment piece from the, from chairperson Whiteside. It's in the actual agreement that, you know, so there's no change that can be made unless we're going to revoke this whole thing and have Carver. It was something that was already dealt with, so I don't know why it's coming back.
Yeah, I looked at the original agreement and had it in there, so I'm not sure of myself as well. So with that, I will ask for a motion to go ahead and approve Article 20.
Make a motion that we approve Article 20 amended and restated agreement, CMW Regional Refuge Disposal District.
I think we've already done that, but need a second for that. Have a vote, Ron?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Alan, yes. The next piece, I need a motion to go ahead, favorable action on that article.
So I make a motion that we move forward favorably on this article. Pardon me, on Article 20.
Thank you. Ron?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions, you can certainly call me or email me. Derek has my phone number, as does Judy, and certainly my email address, so I appreciate your consideration of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jeff.
Next up, we're going to bring in Carl Schultz, Sherry Quirk, basically on a citizens to create an alternative energy committee. If they're here, would you please bring them in? I see Carl is in. Sherry is in. Okay. The floor is yours, guys.
Yes, one note, if Ms. Denise Wolk, she's just starting to know she has an emergency, but if she joins, could we add her? She assisted as well.
She's on the list as well in case she does show up.
Carl, I think that she was going to run the, the slides. Are you prepared?
If you give me a sec.
Sure.
Well, I will be now that I just got her note. Give me a sec.
While Carl is doing that, let me just introduce us. We have Carl Schultz and Denise Wolk, veterans of the Solar Bylaw Study Committee. And myself, I am a newbie, but have almost 40 years of experience in the electric industry, working with or representing electric utilities primarily.
Thank you.
Now, the question is, how do I share my screen?
We do have, I believe everybody has a printout of what the presentation was supposed to be. Unfortunately, we all got it either yesterday or this morning to me because of the Jewish holiday. I wasn't able to do anything until sundown last night. So usually I prefer to have proper information in advance, so if the board has any questions, they're properly prepared, so more than happy to listen to it, but you know, as far as discussion goes, I'm gonna have to wait till a later date.
Okay, then we will, we'll begin. I see that Carl has the, the presentation up now. What we're here to talk with you about tonight is a potential direction for studying and acting on changes in the area of alternative energy that we see coming down the pike. What we will do is to identify those areas and the various changes that we see coming and propose how to address them for the benefit of the town and its citizens. We know that the town has many pressing issues facing it and that there are other very, very large priorities. But this is a plan for a citizens working group composed and constituted, however you might decide, to take on these issues and to provide some input to the town. And next slide, please. We've actually appeared before the selectmen a few times, and the last time we appeared, we were asked to generate a mission statement, and that is what you see laid out on this slide. The mission statement essentially calls on this group to become educated on renewable energy technologies, laws and policies, to analyze potential effects on the town and to develop strategies for addressing them. In particular, the group can look for opportunities to communicate with the town on how changes may provide challenges or, or opportu- opportunities that are positive. Next slide, please. What, what are the issues we're addressing? What are the problems that we're solving? We list them here, the subject areas here. At the top of the list are energy efficiency and battery storage, which we'll discuss more later on in the presentation. But for all of these areas of interest, we propose to study and suggest solutions or actions to advance the town and its residents' interests. Next slide, please. Now, the problem that we see, that we see in a nutshell, is that there are changes in policy and technology along with newly enacted federal and state legislation that signal an increase in interest and investment in climate change technologies and activities. These changes are already affecting Wareham and will continue to do so in the future. The question is, do we anticipate or prepare, or do we react and defend? For example, with solar development, changes were upon us before the town had a chance to consider and plan how best as a town to integrate and benefit from these changes. Another example coming upon us now is battery storage. There are several battery storage projects in the transmission queue in or around Wareham, which means that these projects are in various stages of study and are looking to interconnect and provide power to the grid. Now, we have a chance now to study, plan and prepare for the changes and opportunities and for the town to engage in economic development when it makes sense to do so. With proper study, community involvement and planning, this can be done without sacrificing health or safety or the aesthetic values that make Wareham the town that it is. Next slide, please. We've identified those values that we think are the ones to be protected here. You can see them on this slide. Prominent among them, the health of our citizens, the fiscal health of our town, the environment and the vibe, what makes our town what it is. Next, please. There is one project in particular that we think can provide near-term savings, and that is energy efficiency. And bill-reducing programs for our citizens. Ken Buckland has highlighted to us that a citizen group could assist the Community Partnership Program established between energy companies and the town. The program seeks to reduce energy costs for residents, particularly renters and environmental justice communities and small local businesses through the resources of the energy companies. This program is worth real money, up to $120,000 for outreach alone, as well as the funds spent on energy efficiency upgrades. To access these savings, we need more community involvement and, not to make a pun, but energy. We propose to work with Ken to push this forward. Next slide, please. Another issue that we see coming down the pike is battery energy storage. The state is expecting storage to play a role, a major role in meeting carbon reduction targets. As I said earlier, we see that several battery storage projects are in the transmission queue and that they are lining up to be studied for interconnection, whether and how they can interconnect. We propose to start by studying this issue, looking at a number of factors, including the status of any of the proposed projects, safety issues, including fire safety and the existing unnecessary assets, environmental impacts.
We've lost you.
State or federal legislation and a list of actions for the town to consider, including communications. Next slide, please. And from this study, we would like to propose an action plan, which could include public meetings to gather comments and input, developing a white paper, presentation to the board of selectmen, if necessary drafting zoning bylaws or other necessary requirements. And, you know, potentially leading to town meeting. And this could be done under the auspices of the Planning Board, where Carl and I are both members. Next slide, please. Now, there are other potential projects that we could see this group working on. One is additional work on the solar bylaw. It's still under review by the Massachusetts Attorney General. There are other changes that have been enacted as part of state law that could affect solar development, including the area of agro-solar, which, you know, which is the combining of solar with, with growing. And so we would like to be in position to make suggestions on this as well. And the climate bill recently enacted by the state, there may be opportunities and challenges for the town, you know, including, you know, potential activity in offshore wind manufacturings, job training, et cetera. We also note here that there is a bit of an unknown, unknown out there, which is we recently learned that the planning board that there is, that several of the solar projects that the planning board has approved are the subject of a proceeding before the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, where the cost of necessary transmission upgrades is being addressed. And these costs are potentially enormous and could prevent the approved projects from, from going forward and becoming operational because of the costs that could be assigned to the various projects. We'd like to better understand this impact and determine how it affects already approved projects as well as projects that may be proposed. Next slide, please. Now, there are a number of issues to be considered, number areas of expertise and areas where we, you know, would like to, you know, draw on knowledge that, that we don't necessarily have. This would be in the area of safety, and again, especially fire safety. Environmental, including impacts on wetlands, the aquifer, you know, health, safety and welfare, economic development, seeing if there are opportunities for us to suggest to the town. And there will be potential effects on various town boards, including planning, conservation, economic development. Obviously, this is an area where developers are very interesting and will be very interested. Eversource, already in partnership on some issues is, is a source of information as well. There are many legal and regulatory requirements to understood. The community vibe that we've talked about, you know, want to make sure that we are not disrupting that. And looking at the growers in our community and potential impact on them, especially in the agro-solar area. Next. Now, this is a lot of work. And your volunteer committee would like to, or excuse me, citizens group would like to become involved in this. We think that having access to a grant writer would be particularly helpful in pursuing funding for establishing these activities. And in particular, there may be additional funding available in the energy efficiency area. We know that the town has, as I said earlier, many other priorities that, that it must address. But what we've tried to do here is to lay out a path forward and a way of looking at these issues and getting a handle on them and helping the town to avoid scenarios where the town may be forced to act with limited options. So we would like to move out proactively. We'd like, very much like your advice on direction and how you could see us best functioning in this area. And with that, we would turn it over to you for any questions that you have. And Carl or Denise, if you have been able to join, if you have anything you'd like to add, please, please do.
I believe Denise is in the waiting room.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Sorry that I'm late. Had a, had a small emergency I had to attend to. You know, one of the things that we thought of as we were considering this was when the solar bylaw was passed at town meeting, part of the work that we always intended was that that would not be final, that that should be a living document that needs to be stewarded. And that's one of the reasons why we've been talking about addressing that as part of this committee, so I just wanted to make that point as well.
Carl, you want to bring the screen back, take your piece off? Thank you. Thank you. I'll start with, Ron, do you have any questions, even though we haven't had time to really review any of this?
No, I want to take some time to, to go through what was submitted to us before I make any comments. I want to dig into it a little bit before I give what my two cents might be.
Jared?
Same thing. I just got the whole packet this morning at 10 o'clock and I got the email, so I'd like to have some more time to review it.
Tricia? You muted, Tricia.
This muting is gonna kill me. I'm gonna go to my grave. I'm not used to being muted in my life. I, I have some observations and there may be a question or, or so. So I have been very involved in understanding what's happened, been happening in the town, both with solar generating sites and plans that have been implemented or approved and also initial research on the battery units, the battery storage units. What I really like about what I am hearing Carl, Denise and Sherry is this proactive approach because energy options are not going to go away. They're going to get more and more in our face in different versions as we go on, and that's not just this town or this state or this country. It's worldwide. The interesting thing about this technology is, I think I told some people before, especially in the battery space, most, many of the battery manufacturers for lithium batteries and for battery storage are companies that traditionally have manufactured computers.
manufactured computers, PCs, personal computers, large computers. Those sales have evened out and have been reducing. And so this industry has become a focus for them in order to keep their profits up. And it, it, it has provided a unique situation in the U.S. where in the past, electronic and compute technologies were often got, run through rigorous testing before the products were ever released into the market. In this particular case, the technology is a brand new and they have not been tested substantially before being released. So it will be up to the states and the towns to really be on top of what's happening and how it's happening and how to work it best into our environment. So I'm sure as Carl, Sheri and Denise, as you develop this more, as you look at, if we go ahead and prove it, approve it, look at putting your committee and commission together. I think it will be a very robust and a very substantial and important group to the development of this town proactively.
Thank you. I'll just make a couple of comments, but basically I said, as I was going to ask the chair, once she reschedules to bring this back in so we can discuss it properly. The town already has an energy aggregation program that was put together to give residents and businesses a less expensive option going to the electrical companies. It'd be difficult if we already have somebody else doing this, number one. Number two, my comment very quickly after reading this a couple of times today is that we have a planning board. And most of this falls under the planning board or the Conservation Commission. My experience with the town of Wareham over the last 15 years is that planning board has had several times where they've had subcommittees which took care of the signed by law, the transfer of development rights. This is really in their ballpark as, again, for information to the town, the planning board is a legislative branch of the town of Wareham. It's not part of the executive branch. They are the ones who bring forth zoning articles, which they have public hearings, et cetera. I would think since two of the people here are part of the planning board, that they may want to have a discussion internally with the planning board to set something up as a subcommittee. Conservation also is involved with these areas of, you know, solar farming, et cetera. State Mr. Buckland gets involved with it, even if some of the stuff I do, we get involved with it. I'm not sure. I want to see a whole separate committee with a staff, et cetera, with expense like that. Basically because Mr. Sullivan has enough problems trying to balance a budget as it is. And we already have, I think, 38 or 39 committees in the town of Wareham and we have a lack of volunteers that come and go. So we'll discuss this and we'll get back to you. Thank you very much, people, for what you've put together. We appreciate it and we'll make a decision on this next time around. Derek, go ahead.
Yeah, there was just one question. The, the program that they were, they were speaking about from Mr. Buckland. I started, I think that's the one, the former sister planner, Erin Shaheen, got going, the Community First for Mass Save. Five-year program. You can get a total of 120,000 over the five years. I just had to make sure it wasn't a different one or anything, right?
No, this is the same program. And just, just to be clear, we're, we're not asking for any money at this point. And we're, we're hearing you, Mr. Slaven, and we're also not asking at this point for a committee to be appointed. We're prepared to function as a, as a citizens working group or a subcommittee of the planning board, if that's what the planning board desires. For part of it. There, there are other things. And this is pretty broad, so.
Yes, it is. It covers three or four committees, actually.
Yes. So we would not want to slight any other committee and will function under their jurisdiction.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our sewer department. I believe Mr. Campina should be here and also Mr. Jill Birdy. Yes, no? Okay, I see Mr. Jill Birdy's here. Is Mr. Campina here? I do not see. Mr. Campina on the list.
He's there. He's here.
Is he here?
He just came. Yeah, he just came in.
And show up. Thank you. Who's walking the dog?
No, no, actually the dog's here, but I, I couldn't get in. I had to wait. I tried, but it wouldn't work.
Not a problem.
Alan, Mr. Slaven, the engineers, are they, are they there? I think it's Sarah and, and Mark.
No.
Maybe there's something different. I apologize.
No, this is not that. It's just you and Jim.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's why. Basically, what we're doing here at this point, because of things that have come up over the last month or so, in particular, both the CWMP and also the growth of the town and also sewer capacity. So basically, I don't know if you have a presentation, but what we're really looking at is just some simple answers. We, you had a meeting with the Finance Committee yesterday. And the Finance Committee during the presentation that you, both you and Jim were there for, the statement was made that the plant as it is today has serious issues as far as its, let's say its capabilities of handling the sewer as now. The equipment is not up to standard for what it needs to be in order to work. And it's going to require some substantial expense going forward for this whole thing. And we have some other issues going on. So the questions that I have, because I asked about this to come forward to us was number one. And I just want simple answers, yes and no at this point. Have we officially contacted EPA to sit down and talk about expanding the discharge of 1.5 to 2 million gallons? There's not any discussion indirectly, but directly, has Wareham actually filed a request to sit and talk to these people? Either Jim or Guy can answer for me.
I don't believe we have, but they, we've had conversations.
We haven't, but the engineers.
Okay. Again, so Wareham has not done this. The, the issue that we have is, I will make it clear to everybody that with the moratorium that you've put on, you've placed on the sewer connections, et cetera, going forward, it basically, I want people to understand, it stops any economic development town that requires sewer hookup at this point unless they do their own discharge, you know, et cetera. Anybody adds a bedroom to a house, they have to increase their sewer capacity, which they can't do. So it, we're basically at a point where we're kind of nowhere and we have no plans because there's nothing going on. Whatever we come up with is going to take us anywhere from two to six years to fix. And I have no idea where the Busby Coalition is as far as the discharge over into the canal. We've had no answers from them in several months. And so I have no idea where we're at. And obviously, as of today, you know, I don't know if either one of you can answer. Do we have any plans going forward?
Well, we're looking at a number of different areas right now. We're looking at groundwater discharge, but everything that we're looking at takes time, unfortunately.
We're just trying to get some answers as to where we're at, because you know, we're, you know, I'm not, I'm not picking on anyone or complaining. It's just that this, this issue, actually Guy and I went back, I was thinking it was seven years ago. It's actually about 12 years ago. We met with EPA, the two of us in Middleborough. And we talked about the CMW, you know, comprehensive wastewater management plan and how we could change it. And back then, Guy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We had the Agawam Beach area, which we decided we weren't not going to do because the water was pretty clean there. But they wanted us to go ahead and add some of the mobile home parks along Route 28. And they may consider us changing that. So that plan is still, as it is, is still in effect. And I'm just concerned for the town itself that where we go forward because, and I blame myself probably more than anybody else because I've been after this for a while, talked about it for well over 10 years. But, you know, I've not been able to get any traction, which is really my fault because I simply have not gotten anybody to step forward and make a decision and go for it. Now we're sitting looking at a situation where, 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 you know, we have this thing of, I always made the comment from the Fran Oil Field, it's pay me now or pay me later, and you never want to pay me later. And so we're in a situation where our oil, if you want to put it there, is completely clogged and it's not working anymore. And we have no way to get rid of it to start with. So all I'm asking for is for either you or Guy to give us some idea of how you're going to move forward on the situation.
First thing we're going to do is a comprehensive wastewater management plan. And that's what's being presented tonight because to do anything with the DEP, EPA, is requiring a long-term plan, even if you want to go to the river in the short term. So that's what the presentation was about and the engineers can answer those questions specifically. We're well aware, we were at engineering with DOT to go under the canal. So we were moving forward. It's slow and trying different things. It's just been a long, slow process and, and I can't tell you what happened because, you know, I had no control of certain things, but nonetheless, we are trying to move forward. We're looking at the river. That requires more searing, 28, the mobile home park there. So it's going to require searing to expand the canal if all the parameters can be met of the permit, not just nitrogen and phosphorus, but all the other parameters. So that's, and we did that unofficially. The engineers are asking officially what to do. And so we'll, we'll, we'll progress with that as we go along, but that's not going to happen, Alan, year, two years. That's nothing's instant. There's nothing instant. I don't know how else to explain it. Nothing we can say tomorrow, we're going to have flown. I'm asked this question every single day by developers. They're in the office. I get their wrath. I get their anger. I have no answers. Nothing's happening tomorrow is the reality. So I, you know, it's, it's crazy.
Jimmy, I'm just going to ask you as the chair, those sewer commissions, how are you going to move forward on this?
Well, we're pursuing every avenue we've got available to us at the present time, looking at any other way for outfall. Outfall is the chokehold that the plant has, aside from the equipment and the upgrades that are necessary just to make the plant operate. That's a separate discussion by itself. As far as being able to provide to eliminate the moratorium, which is basically what you're asking. We've got to find a way to expel more product. We're limited by the regulation that we have right now. Odds on, no matter what we do or how well we do it, increasing flow to the river itself probably isn't going to be a high point anywhere. We've had discussions about the possibility of running a different outfall. Whether or not that's even viable, I don't know. Again, so many things you can throw on the table for discussion's sake, but unless you get some engineering, which I, drives me crazy to say this, but unless you get engineering involved in most of these things, you don't have an answer. You're speculating, you're guessing, you're hoping for the best, you're, you're going with, you know, the best information you have, which may or may not be all you need. We will try, and I mean, the board is a board, is really concerned about this. We're very concerned about having to put that moratorium into effect. We don't like the idea of the moratorium, but at the same time, it doesn't do us any good to allow more building to come in and overflow the system and then have the entire system crash, then you get serious problems. We're looking to get, one of the articles that we have is for $6 million to complete the, do the relining for the forced main. The first main is over 50 years old. The one that leads from Narrows Pump Station to the plant. It's well past its, its viability timeframe with after what happened in Plymouth and what happened over in Kamata's Vineyard with their brakes. And I certainly don't want to see anything happen like that here. So those are things that will need to be done as well.
Thank you. We'll start off with, Ron, do you have any comments this time? Any questions? You're muted. You're still muted. Yeah, I'll switch over to Jared though, sorry. Oh, there you are. You're okay.
I mean, I, I have, you know, I have the same concerns everyone else has, obviously with, you know, obviously things getting fixed. I know things take time. But, you know, a plan, something, you know, kind of saying, hey, this is, this is where we're at. This is what we're doing. You know, that's not just important to us, but obviously the people of the town that are, you know, mostly, you know, affected by the things that are going on. I know it's not an easy job, but there's no easy answers. But I'd like to, you know, get to know more, you know, hopefully sooner rather than later. But I know that you guys have a difficult job, but just kind of giving us an idea of where we're at and, you know, what we're going to do to kind of remedy some situations.
Thank you, Jared. Tricia, go ahead.
Yeah, um, Mr. Jure Betty, I'm used to calling you Jim.
It's still Jim.
All right, Jim and Mr. Campina, I think I know who you are, even though I'm only seeing a white name on a black border background here. I do have a couple of questions. And I want to just package this in that I'm used to coming out of a business world where everything's running projects and evaluations. So I'm thinking along that line as I'm talking to you. I'm not finding anything off base or not happening. It's more from my information. My first question is, is the engineers you're talking about, are they town employees or are they consultants we work with?
Consultants.
They're with consultants. And if you, and either one of you or both feel free to answer. If you were to say today, off the top of your head, and you've been looking at this and considering various different approaches, would you say there are two, two potential approaches? 10 potential approaches? How many are we talking about?
Well, there's probably.
Pardon me?
The biggest approach is the discharge.
You can go to the surface water? I'm sorry, Jim.
No, go ahead, Guy. Go ahead. You're on it.
There's only two options. What is the surface water and what is the groundwater? And we're looking at both. There's no other option. Either you do groundwater through multiple plants, what we call a decentralized treatment plants. As an example, West Wareham, Shangri-La, et cetera, et cetera. And you build plants there through the groundwater discharge, the DEP, which we are doing presently. And we run some issues with a lot of bodies of water and so that's being addressed as we speak. Then you've got a surface water, which right now we're in Agawam. You take it out into Buzzards Bay. We looked at Mass Maritime Academy. Through this whole process, there was very little buy-in throughout the entire process. People complained about money and how much it was going to cost, et cetera, et cetera. We've been at this for many, many years and so we never got any traction. It was very non-committal. And Buzzby Coalition has spent tons of money, I shouldn't say tons, a couple of million, on doing research, experimentation, testing to meet the requirements. We hired Wood's Home. So there's a lot of things that are happening and so we've been in that direction. There is really no, we thought of evaporation, doesn't work. So you have two options with wastewater. Put it in a surface body, which is EPA, federal government, or in a groundwater, which is the state of Massachusetts. So those are two options we're pursuing and nothing can happen with either body without a valid comprehensive wastewater management plan. So that's why we hired a company to do this plan. And that plan that I think it was, one of the selectmen talked about, they were going to present to you this evening, that there is a plan. There's a plan of moving forward. There's certain things you have to do. Again, nothing's going to happen immediately, but there's a plan. We've talked about it. We've discussed it and there is a plan to move forward validating the DEP's requirement for a comprehensive wastewater management plan to do any. So that's where we are with it. And the other one is in flux because we didn't complete two. We're supposed to modify it. And, and so that modification has now become a full-blown redo. And the other communities that we speak of that talk about this discharge, the Kid Cut Canal, are doing their comprehensive plans. One's doing a comprehensive. Warren's doing a comprehensive plan. Mary's doing a comprehensive plan because without those plans, nothing's going to happen. So that's where we are.
So, and Jim, you're in, in um agreement with everything Guy says, just said?
Yeah, we've been on, we've been on this uh Tricia for the last uh five years anyhow.
I can see it. I can see it in your faces. I was thinking at least three years. So now I'm looking at how do we move it forward? So we do have consultants putting together a comprehensive plan for us right now?
Yeah, that should be completed when Guy in the next couple of months.
The, well, the plan, right now, what they want to present to you was the plan itself. It's, it's, it's a multifaceted plan. There's certain things we have to do. As an example, we need to talk with every member of the town, every committee, maybe specific to planning, maybe the selectmen, because we have to develop a 20-year growth plan. We're talking about going to the canal. So do we need 50 gallons immediately? Maybe 100,000 immediately. Maybe we can do 2 million gallons of treatment at the plant, so maybe it's 400,000. How long does that last? And so we're putting together as a long-term plan to sue the entire town in many, many phases, but that's what the state's looking for. So that's what we're trying to accomplish.
So let me step back a little bit. So you think um that the plan that you're currently developing will be available within two months, one month, three months?
I, I would suggest that the, the engineers are here. I think they're in, in the background someplace. That's a better question for Mark directly. It usually takes a year to do a comprehensive wastewater management plan. Over the years, we've done a lot of pieces of it, so they have to pull it together. So I can't speak to them. Yes, we put, so I can't speak to them to say exactly, and that's really their call. But that's a question you could ask them directly and get a direct answer. Um, I don't want to, if you ask me, I always say a month, two months, but that's, I, I'm.
So I would say um feedback to the board and, and folks, tell me if you agree or disagree me, with me, shut me up, my peers, if we need to, is I think um it would make sense for you to come back to this, to the, the board, um, check with your, your planners, your plan development engineers on a hard hit when that plan will be ready, so one, we can look at it. Two, you're saying you need some input from other committees, et cetera. Let us know what you need on that and how we can get that together with you or for you.
Yes.
And we're, and we, we're talking money. I mean, I'm sitting as a new select person, and I just looked at about $12 million in potential articles being presented at this town meeting. Unless people want to put out houses in their backyard, we're going to have to look at how we get this done. And from there on, look at grants, et cetera. But I'd like to see police dates in, and I'd like to see a movement forward plan.
Well, what we'd like to see.
Reiterate, I, I, I'm sorry, Jim, but I reiterate, the engineers are here, and they were going to present to the board what we're doing, the overview, so you'd have an understanding. They're also going to ask for your blessing to help us get this done, because we need your support. We need your help to get everything coordinated. That was the intent of tonight for the comprehensive, and within that presentation, to answer the many questions you had. But that's no problem. However you want to do it, we'll come back. You tell us what you need.
Yep.
We'll do it because it's critical. It's important, and we'll do whatever we have to do to satisfy the board.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, uh, obviously, we're not prepared today to make a uh commitment as far as direction and uh, you know, to the, to you itself, since this all goes back to you as far as how this thing is set up. But um, I'm not sure how we move forward because the issues are simply how are we going to go forward? Where it's going to, money's going to come from, et cetera. And no matter what the engineers come up with, it doesn't solve anything as far as any kind of immediate response. Everything is going to be extremely long-term at this point, and unfortunately, it comes back to you as well.
Yeah, so I'm just, we're kind of circling around here because I'm hearing the, the engineers are here to give just some sort of information. Obviously, Mr. Campina and Mr. Joe, Joe Birdy are, are, you know, very knowledgeable, excellent. But it sounds like they had a plan for us to hear something from the engineers. Was it, guy, was it, was it substantive, or do you think is it after, after hearing?
I think it's very substantive in the sense that they're going to explain to you without a comprehensive wastewater management plan, we can't move forward because it's a requirement of the state. So if we're going to do a groundwater discharge, but without that plan, we're not moving forward. It's one of the hang-ups with the other communities around us. So they're going to explain to you the importance of it, why we're doing it, and how it's going to be done. And then I think the board can ask the timeframe, because that's a document, it's a living document that has to be endorsed by the board of selectmen. So we wanted to present, present to the board what this living document was, because this talks about the future growth of the town. Because the D E P is not going to let us willy-nilly and say, we're just going to put more to the river. We're just going to put a little bit to the ground. They need some substance, and that's what the engineers wanted to talk about. So that's why we hadn't come, because it's, you're right. They could do a better presentation of what's required, you know, for me and all this than I can. And that's why we had them come on, because I didn't want to butcher it or mislead anyone or not give you all the information that you need.
Go ahead, Derek.
Whatever your pleasure, Mr. Chair.
Well, I think it's best that we basically bring this back. We have the engineers come for. The problem is the engineers could tell us, you know, what it is and anything else as far as a comprehensive wastewater management plan. But we're looking at actually how we get this done and fixed. And, you know, this is all, I'm going to, I apologize, Guy, because we know this is probably a $60 million project. And well, by the time we're done, we know that the project as presented by the Buzzes Bay Coalition was a $142 million project, which we realized probably would never get done, even though we've asked for an AMI from Congressman Keating, which nothing has come through either. Uh, concern really is how do we move forward? If we're waiting for comprehensive wastewater management plan, how soon will they have it ready for us? Not to tell us what the plan is or anything else, but how soon it will be done, so we can move forward. So I'm going to suggest that we bring this back uh as, as the chair normally would take care of with some answers that way. Because it doesn't do any of us any good at this point to sit here and have engineers tell us about wonderful things they're going to do. It's actually has to be done, and we have to move forward. It, it affects the whole town, you know, substantially. It, it's, it's a serious item. And unfortunately, as I said, I take blame as much as anybody else. We've just kind of put our heads in the sand and just kind of hoping it would go away, and it hasn't gone away. And it's now at a point where it's not repairable today.
I think it's making, just making sure that everybody understands the importance of the sewer plant for the town.
I'll use, you know, it, it's really simple. The plant fails, everybody's toilet is not going to flush, it's going to come back out the other end.
Exactly. Your basement's full.
You know, so I mean, it's, it's an issue, and I think the board needs to, you know, give some direction to Mr. Sullivan as well. Because if you look at the structure of, you know, the sewer department, it goes from Guy to Mr. Sullivan to us. You know, we have to make a commitment as well. It's our responsibility. At the end of the day, the board of selectmen are responsible when things go wrong. It's that simple.
And that was the purpose of the presentation. They were going to talk about timeframes, what we have to do.
Yeah, no. I'm sorry, Guy.
It's not worth it. I understand.
I, I understand. It's like anything else. You know, you get an engineering presentation, it's fine. It's not substantial up because it doesn't, doesn't allow you to go forward unless you get a vote from EPA, et cetera. So it doesn't really matter how, what they come up.
The only thing we need to, we want to know how soon we're going to get that. That's all.
That's all it is. One, the one you have, when they have it finished, when it's going to get done, et cetera. So we give some direction to Mr. Sullivan, you know, because you can't sit here and go two, three years and tell everybody in town you can't do anything.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chairman, there's a bunch of different entities. There's myself, the sewer commissioners, the board of selectmen, you know, the Mr. Mr. Campina and his guidance, the uh town meeting and potentially the ballot, you know.
Absolutely. It's, it's a major project, no matter how we do it. So I'll, I'll, we'll bring this back again, but I think it's important for people to know this moratorium, which is kind of sat in the background, is something that we haven't got a solution for as of today.
That's correct.
Thank you both very much. I appreciate you coming in, and I'm sorry if I've uh made you uncomfortable or anything else. But I thought it was time that we come out with this and people know what's happening.
Yeah, we're trying to, doing what we can. We're trying. We want out of this as far as the moratorium goes, quick.
Not uncomfortable. It didn't make me uncomfortable. I'm just confused, but certainly not uncomfortable.
Well, like I say, I just, yeah, I've just come through a day of atonement, asking forgiveness for all my sins. So I'm trying to move forward the best.
So you got another year to.
Only one day?
Yeah.
It only, it only took me one day to get in trouble.
Yes, that's well, that's always in trouble. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Tricia, let's go on to item D, uh, the Littleton Drive piece.
We'll open a discussion and possible vote to authorize the chair, am I reading, to authorize the chair to execute a de-conveying Littleton Drive property from the town to the Wareham redevelopment authority as authorized by prior town meeting vote.
Okay, my first thing, does anyone have any questions on the Littleton Drive piece? I'll start with Ron.
Uh, no question.
Derek? You're muted.
No question.
Thank you, Tricia.
No questions.
Mr. Sullivan, any comment at all?
No, sir.
Thank you. None for me. The, Tricia, let's go ahead and make a motion on this then.
I make a motion that we vote to authorize the chair to send a letter to A. No, wait a minute. That's the wrong thing. Um, I make a motion that we vote to authorize the chair to execute a de-conveying Little Town Drive property from the town to the Wareham redevelopment authority.
Thank you. And just as a clarification, this is already approved by town meeting prior as well.
Yeah.
Ron? Thank you, Ron.
Yes.
Jared?
Yeah.
Tricia?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Just don't mind. I do, there is no conflict, there's, there's no monetary or anything, but it might be worth it to have Mr. Bessie like myself just abstain as being a member of the W R A, just so nobody can sling anything in the, the long.
That's a good, thank you very much. It's a good, it's a good idea.
So I've changed, changed to abstain. That, that's correct. I wasn't even thinking about that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I should have said some.
Appreciate that. I forgot Ron had been moved over to that as well, uh, Judy. So the vote will be 301. Okay, next we have uh the authorization for love. If you want to read that off, Tricia.
So we um are looking to uh take a vote to authorize the chair to send a letter to the, to A G Mara Healy protesting the proposed dumping of 1.1 million gallons of radioactive wastewater into Massachusetts Bay.
We discussed that previously, but again, I'll ask, uh, Ron, are you in favor?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We'll need a second on that.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ron?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Myself, yes. 400, thank you. And let's see what we got. Okay, I think we have articles. Mr. Sullivan, do you have any of the articles as far as numbers uh one through five that we need to work on today?
Sorry, sir. When I actually, the agenda I had been looking at was for next Tuesday, all earlier today, so.
Yeah, I'm just asking. I didn't, I didn't think you had any, but if anything came up and you were done. Uh, we have, we've already done Article 20, we've done a favorable action on that. Mr. Buckminster will begin with uh his different articles as far as uh Harvard Master, and also next week we'll have the school department in. And I believe the petition articles will be, I think, one on the 11th next week, and the other two will be on the 18th. So there's no more action we can do at that point here with those. All right. I do apologize for the time that I've taken with the uh water pollution control facility, but it's a serious issue for us. Uh, I don't believe we have any issues of $48. Does anybody have anything? Just raise your hand if you do. Thank you. Town administrators report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you know, I, I sent an email to the board of selectmen earlier. We may uh, we may be experiencing an influx of some of our seasonals returning or some that didn't leave that um, you know, they, they unfortunately were impacted by Hurricane Ian. So, you know, if there's anybody that needs help, feel free to reach out. We have been signing them back up for trash and allowing them to continue, even though that, uh, you know, the timeframe for changes had, had been over. So it's uh just something that we forget how, how inter, interlink we are.
Thank you.
On Tuesday, the new COA Director Sharon Rice, we will begin onboarding. So just like any other business, there's a lot to do on the, the first day that they're doing onboarding and getting them on as a, as a brand new employee. So please give her some breathing room. Her head's going to be spinning. It's the, it's not the time to, to approach her with all the big stuff. Let's, let's uh, let's make sure she feels welcome, but uh, you know, supported as well.
I promised to leave her alone.
We uh, we received a letter from Senator Pacheco's office that uh through the assistance of uh his, himself. And uh, you know, Representative Williams Gifford, I believe, that would be, we, COA has received a $40,000 additional earmark this year. So if you're, um, just so everybody remembers, the Elder Services Grant that they had for last year um was essentially unspent, so they didn't spend those funds, so that rolled over as well. So um between the two of those, that's uh almost 150,000 that's going to be available for them on top of the normal funding.
Anyone have any questions from Mr. Sullivan? Raise your hand, Jared.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan, with that money, would they be able to purchase a COA van, uh, making it more accessible for uh some COA members and residents to attend uh events?
Yeah, so there's, you can do a van, but you've got to realize that then you're involving a van driver. There's certain ride shares and things that other communities have been utilizing, which means you don't have to invest in an employee and do other things, which might be a better long-term um solution for, especially for on-demand calls. So the, I know the van has been popular, and you're, you're very right. That's a lot of, a lot of communities. But it might be, might have to think about not being the, on the tail end of that, moving into sort of the, the new format. And it's, and I understand uh people talking about technology, but sometimes it's, it's calling for that. And it's uh, we've also got something we're, we're getting a slide deck and working on for uh something similar that's happening in Plymouth. So we want to see what we can do and then bring that forward. But long story, long story short, yes, you could do that. Uh, but there, there could be some other options that we should all look at as well.
Okay, thank you. Just as a sidebar comment, we have the ability with the gas changes to look at that as well. And we had an opportunity to buy a van some years ago. But again, the question was, what do we do about drivers and the liability and the insurance and everything else? And that's why it was turned down before. Anything else, Mr. Sullivan?
Well, that's uh, we'll stick with all good news today.
I'll try and be, I'll try and be nice at the next. Okay, next up is uh our laser initiative. Uh, Ron, do you have anything today?
Uh, nothing today.
Jared?
I have nothing.
Tricia?
Um, I thought I'd let you handle it today because um I think we're, we're both co-liaisons for the planning board. And so we were both at that meeting Monday, and I thought it might be interesting to hear your insight into it.
No, Mike, the only reason I was at the planning board meeting was we had, uh, they had to do the hearing. And the two items that Mr. Buckland put on for them were actually things that I actually asked for. So I was there just to speak on that only, even though I have to speak as a selectman, no matter what, what it is. I'm never a private citizen anymore. Uh, for me, uh, we had a, we had a meeting in the Holy Cross last week with the governor, Lieutenant Governor. Um, there was basically discussion about all different programs they've done over the last eight years, a few other programs. Forward to Mr. Sullivan, there's really nothing. There's really nothing there. I have a meeting this coming, actually next Tuesday in Paul Fahm with the MMA Board of Directors to plan the next year, where they're gonna put their effort, what rules, regulations, et cetera, that'll try and help us with. And that's all I have. I have nothing on the consent agenda, so I guess I'm not gonna be able to do it simultaneously. Make a motion to adjourn. Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Good night, Wareham.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.